Ready?
Yeah, I'm ready.
I'll come later.
Pans out.
We've got much time. So that's good.
I'm good. Oh, yeah, you want to? You're probably gonna get the one.
Probably.
Because I didn't ever get time to.
Thanks.
Do work?
Yeah.
Okay, good.
Okay, it is September thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, ten o'clock. You're gonna call this meeting, order a roll call. Smile.
Here.
Starts.
Here.
My mercy, I'm here. Okay, number four, discussion regarding the interview with Corbin Mertz and Hany Architects in Interior Design. Okay, well, as you well know, or I think you do, we're need help with building new senior citizens building here in Alba and couldn't set the deal that went up.
Yes.
With both.
We modeled.
And we need that probably. Well, we don't have it right now, but this is just the interview process and you're probably way more familiar with this than us. But I guess we'll start off with the question of tell us about your firm. Like how the business has you done something similar or whatever.
Well, just as far as just a little bit of background of a firm is that Ken Corbin is founder. He's been architect in Enid for since about seventy-two, seventy-one, seventy-two. And he's had a long, long history in Enid, Northwest Oklahoma. Done a lot of different project types. I joined the firm in nineteen ninety-three and been working with him ever since. And we, as you probably run into here in Alba, we don't specialize particularly because you do the work that is available to you. So we've done a lot of different works. We've done a lot of work with a lot of medical work within Tigris. We do a lot of work with school. We do a lot of work with counties around the area. And there's a lot of different types with all of those. We're doing renovations at the courthouse and in Enid. We've done a lot of retirement communities, nursing home work, things along that as well. Both in Enid and in other places. But, but really, I, I think that, that provides a strength to us is that we have a lot of different experiences that we, which we can grow from and work with as far as in our design direction. But primarily what we have, we're a five-person firm. Ken and I are licensed architects. Aaron's licensed interior designer. We have two interns who both have their degrees in architecture or working, taking the test to get their license. So that's a unique element of, of our firm is that you're, you're not gonna be working with people that are just drafts people that are just out of high school or however you wanna handle that. It's being with people, but you're working with people that have kind of gotten the training in, in the field of study. So, but what we try to do, what we try to bring to the table is we try to listen, hear what you have to say and work with you in a process of getting what you want and not just bringing, well, here's our senior citizen. Example that we'll try to fit you into.
Do you have any senior citizen feelings?
We have done the, the Commons in Enid is a, is a nursing home, retirement community, assisted living and independent living center that is there quite a while back. But it used to be Golden Oaks. Now it's Baptist Village and, or in Enid was, was one of our projects as well.
Well, I guess my main question was on that is I didn't know if you were familiar with the fact that this deal is, this one in Alba is kind of a two-fold deal. It's a nutrition center, which there's only one in every county.
Sure.
And senior citizens and it's like two separate.
That's similar to what they were talking about in Winoka as well.
Well, they're just senior citizens. There's only one nutrition center per county.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, they're not gonna cook anymore.
Yeah. It's okay, gotcha. The, the, when I say nutrition center, it's a state-funded deal and only one in each county. And it's my understanding now that the state provides the equipment for this one. And whether they.
Two meals on wheels.
Sure, sure.
You know how many people roughly?
Well, I don't know. At one time there was over a hundred that they. But the numbers went down. But, but my main concern is, is the fact that the state, that kitchen part on this one in Alba is, has to be to state specs. And I don't know whether there's any equipment down here that can be brought to this one or not. I don't know how they do it, but it's my understanding that they fund that equipment.
Equipment will need to be NFP rated, which is just a certification on the equipment. It'll be stamped on there if it, if it meets that. And the, the kitchen design, their, their guidelines, the health department will provide. This is just meet these requirements.
But my point is, is I don't know whether they'll want to, it'll be the state's call whether they use equipment that's out here that's still good.
Yes.
Or go with a whole new.
Yes.
Deal. I'm not, I don't know how that's gonna pan out.
Really, that's kind of the, a way.
Do they need to kind of maybe look at that equipment and have an idea of what they're designing?
Well, or we need to talk to the state to see what.
Give them a blue track for a kitchen setup or?
Yeah, and that, that'll be their, that'll be their design deal. I mean, it's to be with the state. But Monty did come in here after the meeting, what was it, Tuesday or Wednesday, Shelly? And they didn't think the square footage on, on FM's deal was big enough. Because, because he didn't, they didn't, FM didn't include, and when I say FM Ericson, he just drew us a little drawing of a twenty-six-hundred square foot building, just a rectangle. He, he thought was adequate, but they, they use, they have two buildings down there and it's like.
Storage.
And there's storage in one building and.
Yes.
And I, I think you, but you were down there and we looked at the raptors, right?
Yes, 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 we did.
And that's a couple of years ago.
Yeah.
So we need to give them a little bigger drawing or?
Well, yeah, that'll be kind of their department. But he, he brought us the square footage they thought they wanted. Now, whether it's what they need is to be determined.
Now, is that project, are you seeing that changing to where now you're looking at a new building? Or you're still saying they're renovating the existing?
No.
Well, he's talking about the Alba deal.
Yes.
The renovation is only at Winoka.
Okay, sure.
We're building a whole new building up here.
Okay.
What we're talking about.
We figured we could do this almost as cost-effective, maybe cheaper in the end run. It's build a new one. The city, we've made an agreement with them, they've given us a property.
Okay.
So we'll probably have to have a phase one.
Is it, is it within the city of?
Yes.
Yeah, it's over here a few blocks.
Okay.
And so anyway, that's the basics. But yeah, then they need to look to see what they got and, and how it needs to be. They, they got a walk-in freezer, which that caused a lot of the issues down here.
Okay, sure.
The one, you know, that came from Woodward and.
They just set it, set it on the slab they did.
Well, no, they put the equipment up on the roof, which is what, one of those beams.
Yeah, yeah.
Is, it was the, kind of the real kicker of that deal, which there was leaks all the time. I mean, it was a never-ending deal, that flat roof and, and stuff. So, I mean, and, and I think you and Mr. Cogan, we decided that they weren't probably fixable. We get concerned about snow load.
Yes.
And we've dodged some bullets and I don't know if this can happen quick enough, but anyway. And I guess while we're on, okay, here's a question. I think these questions were sent, what, how do you charge? A percentage of the?
We, we can do it a lot of different ways. If, if your program is set, this is the size of the building, one of these are the functions that we're wanting to have in there. If it's fairly well-defined, then we can provide a stipulated sum. The reason that, and all, we can do it however you want. The, the reason that I have a tendency to, to favor that, if, if, if the, able to define the program where the, the project's not expanding and just, or however that happens, is that we are working for you. If we're in a percentage contract and we designed the building, you're anticipating it costing this amount. Well, if it costs fifty percent more for some reason, that, that it can come back to, well, were you working for us? Were you trying to bring your fee up? There's misunderstandings about that. I don't like to be in that world. I like to be straightforward with you. But on the flip side of that, if, if we're just going through this, we're not gonna be building a building that's a Taj Mahal if that's not what you guys are desiring. But, but sometimes we don't have control over a lot of the things with the costs. But we, we want you guys to know we're working for you. We're not trying to.
Well, here's what we're up against. And we might as well know right now. I mean, we need this, we need this project to go up for bids. There can't be a whole lot of change.
Sure.
Because we're gonna use ARPA funds. And we have to have that money encumbered by the end of this year.
You got about ninety days.
Now, what is, what is, what does that look like as far as encumbered? Do you need to be under contract with the contractor or do you need to be?
We need to have bids, a bid and accept the bid. And it'd be pretty much stayed to that figure.
Yeah. Ask for the money, this is what we're gonna pay.
The turnkey job. I mean, you know, with the subs in there, we need, we need pretty much the entire deal.
That, I would need to communicate with my engineers and we need to get back with you as far as if that's feasible from our end. Because as, as you guys, we're not coming here with, with no work. We're coming here, we have other things, there are other commitments that we have. And whether we could, we could make that happen, I, I would need to look at that a little bit more closely.
It's how long is the bidding process? Usually six weeks?
It's usually, now it's a thirty week and twenty, twenty-eight days?
I think so. So if you start working backwards, right? So if you have to have it by the end of the year, then that means drawings have to be done by November, which means we only have one month to organize everything, which gets very tricky.
Well, and, and yes, there's. I, I would, that would be the first question that I would want to make sure. If the, if the, if the requirement is you are under contract or if you have, if you're able to base that on an estimate. Or another direction I'd ask on that is could this be a construction management project where you're able to have a guaranteed max and eliminate that bidding process? Or I say eliminate the bidding, if the bidding would be done, can be done during the design part to some degree or?
We've also had another project where they were able to extend the ARPA funds. So they asked for an extension for a couple of months as well.
Okay. Well, we could look at all of that. I mean, I'm not, I, we just gotta stay within the rules.
Absolutely.
Are you looking at using the ARPA funds for both projects?
Yes.
Uh huh. Okay. So Winoka was fairly straightforward, at least if the program is kept to what we talked about. That was just simply new finishes on the wall, expanding the bathrooms a little bit. That one was fairly straightforward. That was not really a time-intensive element.
Right, it is an existing building.
Yes.
Yeah.
So, but with a, with a new building and what you're talking about does not sound like a complicated program, but still you wanna do it properly. I want to give it time, get everybody on course. Do you know, does, does, like you have, does it have access to utilities?
Yes.
Yeah, no problems with that?
Yeah, it's right here in the city. It's just down here a couple of blocks. That's been the big holdup though, is us getting the, the, the deal done with the city of Alba. We've been working on this since before the first of the year. And just about a couple of weeks ago, we, we finally got the deal made. We couldn't do much without, we had the property tied up and.
Is there any issue with, with drainage or flooding of the property?
I don't think so.
Okay.
It's an old armory.
Okay.
Site. The school uses old armory as a bus shed and the city owns the rest of the entire block.
Okay.
And we're just gonna go take half of the, the street for our, any department. Well, the armory's on one corner, be the, the southwest corner, and we wanna use the southeast corner.
Okay.
And.
So just, I'm just thinking through this, what, your program, what you're discussing with that is you're gonna have a day room or activity room? You're gonna have bathrooms and office, a kitchen? That would be a, a commercial-grade kitchen with the commercial hood.
Right.
And, and a serving area. And overall, are you, are you still looking at that twenty-seven-hundred square foot or?
No, we'd hit stronger than that.
And there'll be a storage room?
Yeah, storage.
And is there, as far as vehicle storage, is there anything like that or?
No.
Okay.
Just, I like the design that FM just drew it up. And he had an awning and a front, the front deal and a drive-through, which would be on the south side.
Yes.
Then the west side, probably an overhead door and then a walk-through door on that west side. I would like to have an awning, but it was.
Thinking a square foot, another thousand square foot?
Well, that building was forty by six and I, it's gonna have to be between three and four thousand square foot, I think. See, this was a pretty basic, this is what we.
Just kind of drew up.
Okay.
But that, that size right there pretty much limits, there's no storage factored into that bill.
Okay.
And that's our twenty-seven-hundred and you think.
Twenty-six, yeah.
Add another fifteen-hundred square foot?
Yeah, possibly.
Is that good?
Yeah.
You know, up there closer to four thousand?
Yeah.
Give them an aperitif?
And, and basically that is like the design that's over there, which were in there, kitchen, kitchen, the restrooms and office all were all on that, the south end. The rest of the thing was open.
Are you set on the idea that it needed to be a pre-engineer metal building or is that, what are your thoughts on that?
I think the quickest bills, I mean, as far as timing, I don't know.
Well, no, that's, there, there, there are, there are pros and cons to it and I just wanna know your thoughts on it. If, the, the pros that I see to it is that you're, you're, it is a kit, you're buying it as a kit, set on the, and they could. I say that to some degree. I know some of the pre-engineer metal building companies have been backlogged and it's been several months in order for them to get their materials, but I don't, I don't, I don't know if, how, how much of a factor that is anymore. But that, that is something we have run into. But the other side to that is just as far as the, there, there are things that metal buildings bring to the table. If you're gonna be having exhaust hoods for, for kitchens and things like that. Not a big fan of putting equipment up on a metal building. As a matter of fact, I wouldn't, I just.
No, I don't, I, I really don't want on that. Cause it's not gonna be a flat roof and it's gonna be hard to.
Well, you get, metal buildings, they, they work as long as the sealant and everything is, is working on them. And you could get a piece of rattling, a piece of, of, of a motor up there, really. And also to service it and things like that. You just don't wanna have to put it up on the metal roof.
Right.
So.
I, I'd kind of like to have options, you know, metal building, rock building, whatever. You know, I don't.
At a, at a, well, and that, the other thing is just longevity. With the metal building, you, you, you guys are familiar with it. I'm not gonna need to tell you, but metal buildings are, they're not designed for, for a hundred-year lifespan. They're designed for twenty to thirty-year lifespan. And, and there's, there's pros and cons to it, to it, as far as the, their efficiency and some things like that. But I know at the, we just did a health department over in Menford and we opted to go with the wood frame construction. It's very residential style construction on it, which cost-wise, it may be comparable. But what that offered us is that we're able to go with more durable materials on the outside easier. You could put, you could put brick on the outside of a metal building, but it's not really designed for that. That system isn't really set for that. So it's, and, and you start doing things along that line and pretty soon your, your metal building isn't an efficient structure. It's, if you put a lot of windows in and a lot of things like this, you're starting to kind of defeat the, the efficiency that you get with a metal building.
Right.
So the, the only reason I was just asking that is on buildings that I would call civic buildings, this is something that you guys are gonna build and you're gonna be maintaining for the next seventy-five, eighty, a hundred years or however you wanna look at it, is I tend, my tendency is I, I encourage building in a more enduring type of materials, construction type for that because it's easy to get in.
Wood frame.
It's easy with your, wood frame, my first choice is if, if it's affordable, it'd be to go into like block exterior walls and, and making something where it just, you're, it's just not getting beaten up as much. It's designed for, for durability and.
Stone.
Well, concrete block for, for the mace, for the exterior, interior wall and then brick on the exterior. Stone is, is more expensive than brick, but brick is.
Well, I'm.
This area is, is very.
Brick's stone to me.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. But it's just, that's a, that's, that's, I'm saying at this stage is the decision-making that is based on, on what you, where you wanna head. And I, I fully get the idea of this is what we feel like we could afford, is easy, efficient. I, I get that. We, we've done a lot of metal buildings. But I'm just saying is I think that discussion's worth having before, before you jump that way.
Okay. But I just, I figured time.
Yeah.
Would, would be a big, and they also mentioned that, you know, I guess, uh, extension. I mean, if added onto, I don't know which one would be the easiest to do that if in time.
I think that if, if you were looking at, at, at growing this, I think that the simple shape with either direction is, is the key to that, is if you're going to expand that one direction, then, and if you're fairly confident that you're gonna do that, is maybe on that side, you don't look at putting your expensive materials. You kind of design it so that it can expand with.
Kind of open wall.
Yeah. Or at least some thought given that way so that you leave room on the side to expand in a certain direction.
Well, I'm pretty diehard about this being a rectangle.
Yeah. No.
Yeah.
No, I, I think you, you need to have a reason to, to not build simple, a simple shape. There's just no reason to, to do that.
Because their big deal down there is the open area.
Yeah.
They eat in it and then there's a small area down there for.
Socialize.
Yeah, that's right. Get the dominoes out.
Yeah. And, and I understand that. The parking, we should be able to make it good down there where we're at.
Yeah.
They could even be, there's even, there's nothing else on that block, so it could be good for recreation for.
Yes.
If nothing else and not stays and.
But generally, just looking at the design, I like, I like the simple roof. I like the drive-through canopy and how that works with your building. I think there's some good thought just given into this and I'm not suggesting that you don't go that way.
So I, I like that, just maybe it's bigger than what he has that.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
And how it fits on the lot. I don't know if there's any existing conditions to the lot as far as for drainage or trees or things that you'd wanna.
Pretty flat.
I think drainage will be, it's, it is pretty flat, but I think it's, just like anything, it needs to be built up or, or be sure it's higher than.
Yes.
The rest of it. But.
For no other reason, it looks better. To get building out of, out of a hole.
And, and I'll put it this way, if there is any expansion on it, I think it needs to be to the north. I think the way that essentially right there is how it, it would sit down there.
So this, this long side is the north side?
Well, no, this is the north side, over here. This is the south.
Okay, south side is where the canopy is.
Yeah. And the west, I don't know, it doesn't have an overhead door in here, but I'm, this west side or one side, which the west side, the parking will probably come in from the west side here and maybe could go around. But I see that I would, I prefer this canopy on this to be the full width of the building or a pretty good sized area for him to sit outside, you know, have some stools and stuff there. It would be pretty well shaded, all except for late in afternoon and there's not much goes on there late in the day.
I like, I like the idea of having the long side of the building on the south side.
Yes.
For, if, if expanding, you kind of, I think in some ways it's easier to expand the gable side of the building than expanding to off of the drainage side of the building. You, forces you to kind of get into it, putting the, the, some valleys on there and break out. And maybe that's worked in at the beginning, is that you, you design the roof with, with a, with a gable end on that side or something where it's able to be expanded out without having to tear the roof all the way back to get it out.
Design that expansion in there.
Yes, design where you're able to expand it without, cause you don't wanna have to tear out half your roof just in order to.
And, and my opinion to start with is, is it just needs to be wider.
Okay.
Instead of longer.
Instead of longer, okay. Yeah.
I mean.
Thousand.
We, we got a, we got a whole.
About a thousand square.
The whole block, yes, is open on that one side.
Yeah.
Fourteen, fifteen hundred.
The armory building sits over here.
Four thousand.
Yeah, and that'd be a pretty good spot.
I see the twenty-seven hundred.
In between there.
It's, are you, are you seeing where people would be walking to the building as far as from the neighborhoods? Is it sort of the thing where you're seeing a pedestrian?
That, that could be, there's not much traffic.
They're gonna probably drive.
Drive and park there, okay.
Close, take and get to the door.
Yes. Well, that's true, that's good.
But it is in the older part of town and there are older people down there that might attend that don't now even.
Mm-hmm, that's true.
Well, it's really the thing that I guess we would need to get an answer to you as quickly as we can is the schedule, if we look at it, if we're, if we're assuming it has to be bids in by the end of the year so you could be under contract with somebody by the end of the year, you think.
Are we could do that maximum estimate?
Guaranteed max? That's, that, that's something that a general contractor could.
Yeah.
Provide that. The, you look at Christmas, between Christmas and Thanksgiving is just a difficult time.
Right.
So Christmas, New Year, that, that weekend is gone for just general contractors. So you, you have a, a window there in, but, but really November is the time. We would have to have drawings done by the end of November in order to.
I mean, we just gotta have a figure.
Yes.
Is, is all amounts.
So that's a question I just need to bring to our, our engineers is that, that gives us two months from today to, to get to where you have biddable drawings. And that's, that's a question I just need to figure out.
Right. And, but that, that's where we're at, that's what we're up against. You guys think of anything else? Oh, and about the construction management. Yeah, it's my understanding that. Yeah, it's my understanding that you all will provide a person for that or we can provide one. Is that right?
There's a lot of different arrangements. You get a design build type of an approach where the architect and the building group are the same entity. There's one contract. We've never done that before. We've done a lot of projects with construction management where you're contracting with us with an agreement to the construction management. You're contracting with them as a separate agreement. And they are, and that's where the guaranteed max, it's their, uh, construction management at risk. Where they are working and with it, once they get the documents, they are assisting during the design phase as far as giving you an idea of, if we're heading toward a specific budget that, that we would fall within that, they should be able to give us a fairly clear idea. Keep going, this, we're, we're heading the right way. And, but then they will bid the subcontracts. But their fee is a, is an agreed upon amount before the start. For example, if you've heard of duty hall construction, I think their fee is in the neighborhood of about eight to ten percent. And that's just non-negotiable, that's just what their fee is for, for doing construction management work. They do a lot of schoolwork around this area, but, uh, but they're not the only construction management groups that you could talk to, but that's just one. But, um, so that, that would be the arrangement with the construction management that I, that I'm more familiar with. Where you're basically hiring them at the start of the project. They assist with estimating through the design phase and giving suggestions as far as this construction through that. On, on this type of a project, they're, it, it, it's not complicated, so it's.
Right.
So I'm making, but, and then they, they, where they may be able to give a better idea. I, I, I could say wood frame residential style construction is comparable in price to the shell of a pre-engineer metal building. They would be able to give you a much clearer picture of whether that's true. I've talked to other contractors, saying, you know, it's, it, it, it gets toward, that's not, there's not a lot of difference between that, but there may be still some. So, and they may have a better picture of that than I would.
So we do have a lot of projects in this area right now, so we would be involved in construction as far as coming and visiting the project often. Um, we have a good relationship with our contractors as well, and so we would still be there and be heavily involved.
Well, if it's possible, I've always been pretty diehard that we keep everything in, like contractors if we can from Woods County and.
Sure.
And everybody we can use locally.
Absolutely.
Okay. Do you have a general contractor in Woods County that you're, you're familiar with that's your?
We've got some metal building people.
Okay.
Uh, Erickson Steel.
Yes.
And Ritter.
Okay.
And, uh, so, uh, those are the only two I can think of right now. We've got a new commissioner over here and his son's in the business, but I think that puts him out.
Okay, yeah. Yes. Well, and, and really my, my thoughts on that, if you, if there's reasons that, I just was giving my, an opinion on that. If there's reasons that you like the idea of going with a pre-engineer metal building, it's just, that's absolutely very feasible to do.
Well, I guess more than anything, the, the timeframe and the.
Yeah.
The, I, you know, it is what it is. I think a metal building and the metal on the outside is the quickest and.
Yeah. Yes.
You know, uh.
We need to get them in something before that falls in.
Yeah.
You know.
Yeah. Uh, I mean.
I think they'd be happy with metal building.
We've got some metal buildings out at the fairgrounds, our existing fairgrounds that were built in the seventies.
Yeah, and they're still serving yet, so.
Yeah.
Very good.
So they're, they're pretty longevity friendly there.
Okay.
And I was also told, and I don't know the stance of me, I don't know, it, no explanation, but that could maybe eliminate the ceiling on one of these deals. With the foam insulation, the spray in and somehow.
Or you could do, you could do that, or another system we use is we have a, just exposed vapor barrier that they put on the bottom of the purlins. Put their insulation on top of that, so you don't see the purlins, you're seeing just the underneath side of the vapor barrier. So that gives a, a cleaner look to a metal building without ceilings in there.
That would be a pretty big cost savings, I think.
The, there's pros and cons to it.
Yeah.
Because now you're taking your interior walls up higher than you may if you had a ten foot ceiling or a nine foot ceiling there. You're getting more walls and also, um, your duct work and everything is now exposed, all your electrical and everything. And a contractor looking at that, round duct's more expensive than square duct. And you can do exposed square duct, it's just, uh, maybe not as, as finished as you, as you may have in mind with it.
We actually saved money on a recent project by putting in an acoustical ceiling versus everything exposed.
You're just, your work, I'm not saying quality, but your work concept is different if you know all your work is gonna be exposed. As opposed to if it's just gonna be concealed behind the ceiling. They just, it requires, it has different requirements of them.
They can make that exposed pretty nice, so.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
Oh, no, we love exposed ceilings, but the idea that exposed is always cheaper is a misconception. But we love exposed ceilings.
Okay.
I mean, I kinda like it. Most of the time it's a have to, you know, in older buildings and stuff, but they make it look pretty nice.
Yes.
Uh, and that's the thing is that with exposed ceilings, a lot of times, um, you're doing pendant lights, you're doing things, they're, they're more expensive than drop in lights. So a lot of the elements that you put in to accommodate the fact that it's exposed are more expensive elements.
Senior kitchen will be required to have a ceiling.
Okay.
You're not allowed to have a exposed ceiling structure in the kitchen.
Okay.
You have to have a walk, a cleanable surface.
Okay.
So you're not getting dust dropping down into the food.
Yeah. Okay.
So. But that's another thing is that we've also, a lot of times it makes, just makes more sense if you have office space, you have bathrooms. You don't need a bathroom with a twelve or fourteen foot ceiling.
Right.
So you, you just have a portion of the building that's drop ceiling and then the, the large great room or whatever you have, that's more exposed.
Well, that's kinda how they are down there.
Yeah.
You know.
Yeah.
It, it's all, all back there on the back part. And then the open area is higher than, you know. And, uh, but no, I think simple, but adequate, you know, it's.
So, and I'm, what I'm hearing that you need from us is a, is a agreement that we could meet a timeframe and by the end of November having a design. And I will talk to our engineers and see what their thoughts are. And we make the assumption that we're doing a pre-engineer metal building and we can get a, a, an estimated fee proposal for you for that. And assuming what I'm hearing is about a thirty-five to four hundred, or four thousand square foot pre-engineer metal building. That, and do you have a plat of the site?
No.
Or if we could probably get.
I would get one.
And then do you have a survey, uh, that, get a topographic survey that would show? Those are, those are elements that, that as we get going, and it's not gonna impede the design, but that would be something that would be important to kind of, if, as we're, cause it usually takes.
Don't you have probably?
Four to six weeks to get a.
Get some size.
Usually it takes four to six weeks to get a survey, which that seems reasonable, but when you're talking about two months timeframe and that'll need to happen for a survey.
Yeah.
Right.
So, well.
What was this square footage of the Winoka building?
Three thousand.
It was in that neighborhood, if that sounds about right.
No, I showed you what.
Yes.
And that, whatever he figured.
Yes.
Three thousand, wasn't it?
Um, I, I did not, I did not get a drafting plan or anything on that yet.
I looked, uh.
And then the design.
I have no idea, we can measure it.
And then what would the design of that entail?
That, that building was, it was the sunroom or the, the common room for an existing, um, nursing home. So you had the nursing home, long stretch of rooms on one side, and it had a pop out that was their sunroom, uh, day room. And it had a kitchen off to the side and a dining room, shelter.
So the areas that we would be remodeling are.
Just the day room, the, the dining and the kitchen. So it's just that part, we were gonna do a firewall between that, cause the other spaces is vacated, it doesn't have any walls, um, sheeting on the walls. It's just, it's just a vacated space.
So the kitchen in that area would be still same equipment?
It's, no, uh, it's not really a cooking kitchen, it's just kind of a little warming kitchen.
Okay.
You know.
Like a little kitchen at maybe a microwave.
Big, long hoods, but they ain't gonna have no big stove in there. You know, a little long warming stove or microwave or something like that, simple, ain't gonna do, do a hood, no major cook.
That, that's the challenge is to explaining that to the, is the, the way the state is, has worded that is that if, if it's a, if, if people, if they're cooking and people are eating there, it's a commercial kitchen.
Yes.
Well, I didn't word that.
Um, what about a microwave?
You would have to take your stove top and your hoods out.
A microwave is not, that would not, that's.
That's fine.
If it were just a.
I don't see any need in having a hood in the kitchen that you ain't cooking in it.
And, and the hood would, uh, almost assure.
I mean, you trying to see what we had down there.
The hood would almost surely need to be replaced, it would be out of, would meet.
Yeah.
Requirements anymore for a hood. So that would be the question and, and that's, and it's not like it's undoable to do a hood. If you guys want that, of, of, of capability, it's just a fifteen, twenty thousand dollar decision.
Yeah.
So, uh, but if you want that capability.
I mean, to have any kind of a stove there is, is called a commercial kitchen.
You would be required, any type of a stove, cooktop, you would be required out of the hood. And if, as if you would be cooking food in there and serving to people, then yes.
Or if you're just warming it up like a microwave.
Then you're not.
Then, yeah. If it's just a microwave.
It's not a complaint.
They're not cooking. Make them do it.
They just bring their food in.
You hear, here's the easiest part is my question is if there's a hood in there, what do we have to have for fire protection on this deal?
On that project, and this is something I would need to talk to the, the, their COVID officer that they have in Winoka. My, where I would come from as far as my perspective is we're putting a firewall between those two buildings. So we're just dealing with a three thousand square foot building. That size of a building does not require a sprinkler system, it doesn't require an alarm system. Um, so it, it, it's just a, it's just a small building and you should be able to go in there. But, uh, that, that would be my interpretation, I, I would need to get.
Well, especially, I think though, if they've got a hood in there, I think there may have to be.
Couple of them.
You could, you could have a hood without a sprinkler system.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. And the, the.
There's a sprinkler system down there though.
Okay, but, yeah, but it really has to be off, uh, off or not is another thing. But what, um, this, this building.
Probably have to have the kitchen.
Is the same situation, what, what kicks in the requirement for a hood is if you're of a dining facility, if you have over a hundred occupants in there. Which is based on the occupancy load of the building.
Square foot, it's not actually people.
And that size of a building should not have over a hundred people occupancy under it, it's just not that big of a building. It, it's either a hundred people or five thousand square feet.
So the hood doesn't have any bearing on the fire protection deal?
Not, it does have any bearing on it requiring a sprinkler.
Okay. Well, I know we put one in back here and we had to get fire, uh, a sprinkler deal to it or.
Oh, it has a fire suppression system built into the hood, that's not a sprinkler system, it's two separate things.
Okay.
So reese fire.
Yeah.
Yes.
Where it goes off and just, I don't know.
But I think, I think twelve thousand square foot is the minimum without a sprinkler system. Anything over twelve thousand requires a sprinkler system.
That, yes, in general, depends on your, if it's, if it's a dining facility, it's five thousand. If it's, if it's business or assembly occupancy, it's twelve thousand.
Okay.
Twelve thousand or three hundred.
Especially if they're sleeping in there.
If it's sleeping, all beds are off, you have a sprinkler. If you have one bed in there, you have a sprinkler. Unless it's the person's house. But, uh, so, which, I mean, you're not dealing, you're not gonna be, at least I'm assuming you're not buying on.
No, it, it was just, I was just about, uh, we've got, had an industrial market that twelve thousand square foot came out. There is a, there is one other option you can use and that's a fire alarm.
Fire alarm is, if you have over three hundred people, you're required to have a fire alarm.
Well, square footage, uh, what I'm getting at is that alarm can offset the square footage, is my understanding. In a commercial building.
Yeah, not for a sprinkler. The sprinklers, the requirements for a sprinkler are separate from the requirements of a fire alarm system.
Okay.
So, and there, there's, now, in that, that, uh, square footage is for a fire area. You could have a building that is three times as large, but if you break it into fire areas with firewall separation, you can eliminate the sprinkler system. But at a certain point, you're building a lot of firewalls and you're making your building grown up. And it's costing more than doing the sprinkler system.
Right.
But.
Yeah. Well, and that's the basic, but that picture as far as I'm concerned, I like that design, I think we've all, we've got design.
Just add a couple.
We just need more square foot.
Yeah, fifteen hundred or whatever that.
Go wider and, and we'll figure on their storage, that's the only thing, the storage. I don't know, there's, it probably needs to be some type of door in that east end.
Door on the east end?
That's the west end.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, door on this end.
Uh, maybe even an overhead door because.
Down there east and west, you can have that paper.
All right, thank you.
That'll, that'll be helpful.
Really, I'm pretty good with directions. Okay.
And, and, and the reason I'm saying that is that they have, I don't know for sure how their commodities come in and stuff. But, but I'm presuming that we're gonna put the kitchen and stuff to the east.
Okay. Another way of looking at this, this is just a thought, if you take this structure and you, you build it as a, and, and we've done this before. It's not the only way to do a building, but at this one, it seems like there's some things that might make sense about that. If you build this where it's a single slope, um, structure, what that would allow you to do is if you do have a hood, you can put it on the outside wall over here up high and blow out the wall so that you don't have anything up on your roof. And also, if you're doing an expansion, you, you could put a gable on that end and go out and you're not tying into the roof, you're tying into the sidewall. So that might be another reason to look at it, think a different shape. Yeah. And this, this, this can just continue down and you just have a, a single, you, you have an entire roof that doesn't have any gap, gables or valleys in it. Or ridges, it just has a, uh, rink along the.
Or ridges.
A ridge along the top, I guess.
So, okay. I think we get the square footage for them and get what they want, I mean, I think that's the, the main deal.
Yeah.
You know, get them adequate.
We gotta have, we gotta have a design.
And they talked about, I don't know, they talked about that walk-in freezer setting on the outside.
Okay.
With just a, a walkway to it or, or what?
Yes.
They are, they have to be serviced and they, they're not a long-term deal, I don't know.
Sure, they make some, I, I think it costs more money to have one that has a next year shell on it, but, but.
We've done them both.
She's here to get out of the building.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Well, and if you have overhead doors, then not necessarily.
Yeah, well, they, they break it apart, yeah. Kind of thing together.
Yeah.
We'd definitely work with them before this.
But it's just, uh, you know, if that stuff could be kept on the outside, you know, it's a, the weather effect is, it's hot in summer, cold in winter, so.
Another thing you could do is you could get a kid that has the floor is above grade. So you may have to have a ramp up to the freezer, but it's just a unit that is sitting in there. Or you may design it to where, uh, somehow to where it maybe is stepped down, but it's not, you're not putting your insulation under the slab or anything like that. You're just dealing it where it just sat in there and if you have problems with it, it can be disassembled and taken out. The thing I like about having it on the inside of the building is, yeah, you're not, you're not fighting the hundred and twelve degree day and trying to. Trying to, your buildings out there just screaming, just trying to keep up. I bet.
Of course, on the winter, it's more efficient.
Yeah, that's true. Yeah.
That's what I meant about.
Yes.
Plus and minus there.
That's, yeah, that's true.
Okay. Anything else you need to know from us or that we need to know from you?
I guess the question I would have is this proposal, I could have an assumption of what you're wanting us to provide. And what I would assume on that is you're gonna want us to design the facility, be in charge of the structural, mechanical, electricals, plumbing for the, for the facility. We'll do interior design as a part of that, selection of all the materials. Uh, we would do the design, we would assist with the bidding and, uh, yeah, organizing the contract. And then overseeing construction, just as far as being, working with you to come to the side on a once a month basis or something, just to review the work, to make sure it's been done for the plans. And working through the construction and then helping with any quotes out.
Yeah, I'd say that.
That, that, that is a typical arrangement, but I just wanted to make sure that's how it's gonna be.
As civil.
That would be a question.
Owner, we work with civil, but that's by you.
And civil engineering is site drainage and, um, a lot of times, yeah, the site design. A lot of times we kind of handle the site design ourselves and then civil engineer. But you get into any detention of water on the site to avoid causing additional runoff. If the city has requirements for that. But that's the other. So we can get a proposal for, for civil engineering as a part. I don't know if you can, how you handle that.
Well, the civil, what, okay, what's that?
The civil engineering is, they're, they're in, the civil engineer is primarily the site design. So the, they would, they, they are involved with drainage to make sure that we're not, uh, and also utilities coming to the side. Yes.
The, the bomb, you know, like, what am I trying to say? Environmental studies and that kind of stuff, make sure they're.
They, they, they can do that as well, just they're, 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 they basically bring everything that's outside of about three or four feet from the building out. That's the part they're, they're involved in.
Like we're draining this whole roof and wants to.
If we're gonna be draining off to this side, where's that water going? And, and, and a lot of times there are requirements that the state has and that the, the, the city may have as far as that you don't increase the amount of runoff on your site. So they have to detain that water and let it out at a controlled due period. Things along that line.
Okay.
You're seeing, you're seeing a lot more of that, just about many buildings now. You see there's usually a little depressed area on the side of the building where there's detaining water.
Okay. All right. Well, I know the first thing we'll have to do is arrange one.
Okay. Yeah, and that's something that you can, you can have done right now if you wanted to.
Right. And, and, and we need to get that done because that's the first thing, especially being on, uh, an armory. I, I don't think, I grew up down there and I don't think there's gonna be any issue.
Yeah. Just to make sure, uh, somebody do a research of the, right, the land use.
And so, okay, well, uh, we will, we will try to have a decision on this by the end of the week.
It will, it'll take usually about a week, a week and a half to get contract proposals back from our engineers. So that will be, but I, I can get an answer hopefully in the next two days whether the feasibility to get that done in that amount of time.
Okay.
That's why, what I don't want is I don't want you guys to be mad at us.
But I appreciate that and we know that, we know we're, we.
I'll cut.
Lovely.
Yeah, yeah.
Hopefully it'll all work out.
Sure, sure. All right. And, uh, we've, we've got our marching orders, we might try to get back to you next year too.
Well, appreciate your time.
Yeah.
And, uh, we'll, we'll visit again this week.
Okay.
All right.
All right, well, thank you guys.
Thank you.
Aaron, look to listen to Katie, Katie, doesn't it look, cause I just wanna make sure.
Yes, H A N E Y.
Okay.
Good to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
You too.
One try?
I was just giving her time. Are you ready?
Ready.
All right. Number five, the proposal limits of the last regular meeting September twenty-third, twenty twenty-four.
I've read them five times, did it, did it in the middle of the night, I thought the same thing.
On favor?
Aye.
Number six, discussion and possible action regarding the Attorney General, twenty twenty-four Sheriff's Office Funding Grant Program Agreement. I thought we already approved.
You did the application. This is the actual agreement that they.
Do we need to read it to be sure they didn't change it?
You, yeah, yeah, we might, um, I don't know. I, uh, I know they didn't, they listed that out and that's same, that looks the same to me on that part of it. And I think that's all they really attached to the, it's a, looks like it's a normal.
This is what they're proposing and, and this, we sign this agreement and the Attorney General looks at it and.
Right.
Is that kind of the process?
Well, I think, I think they gave them the amount. I think it's approved.
Right.
Clarify, paper.
Just to go move on with what.
I took your spot, yeah. We're not seeing over here. I, it seems strange.
Okay. Well, here's the main thing on that is how they're gonna extend it. So this is the same thing.
Oh, this was it.
That's kind of what they said, the one?
Yes, I mean, that one's got the total on it, the only reason that they totaled it up in that hundred and fourteen, I heard, I thought. The. That motion to approve.
I'll make that motion. I'll second.
On favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right.
Yeah, I mean, it's.
Yeah.
It is what it is, that's what they ask, that's what they get. I'm good with it.
All right. Number seven, discussion and possible action regarding bid number twenty-four dash twenty-five dash O two, sell, use brushbrush.
We got four this time.
Wow.
Yeah.
Four more than that.
What, 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 what year model or what kind of brushbrush?
It's.
Ford. Ford F three hundred. Ford.
Yeah.
This is fine.
Sixteen Ford F three fifty.
Three fifty.
A little bit, so.
Bad bid?
Yes. It doesn't have anything noted on it. Yeah, Hominy County District Three. Sixteen thousand, three seventy-two. Hominy County District Three?
Yes.
Okay. Um, Richard Burton for twelve thousand. And then you got environmental cleanup out of Lexington, Oklahoma for twenty-five, seven fifty-one.
Bingo. Twenty-five thousand?
Seven hundred fifty-one.
Environmental.
Seven five one. Environmental cleanup incorporated, Lexington, Oklahoma.
That's easy. Let's search some others.
That is it. I lost one.
Three out of four ain't bad. Well, we had nine last week.
This one would've been fine if it would have had a front page with a notary on it.
Who was it from?
Uh, he was out of Washington.
What age, what he bid?
Twelve.
That's him, I'm sure, really.
Yeah. Loser.
I was like, Bill, Bill, Washington's where he's from.
I'd say this is environmental cleanup if you're asking me, that's.
Was that a motion?
I'll make that motion, yeah.
On favor?
I'll do that. It's worth that, it's good to have, but.
Well, that's way more than neighborhood, I saw.
Yeah, that's, double what.
Closer.
Double what the others were.
Say all in favor?
Aye.
And it's so. Okay. Number eight, discussion, possible action regarding the road transit grants. McGinnis Energy Company Incorporated. And that was in District One.
Seventeen, twenty-nine, fourteen. And five hundred dollars.
Did they send you their money?
They did.
All my submissions approved?
I'll second that.
On favor?
Aye.
Eight, sign. I'll just send it around.
What is it, a?
Water? Water.
Water. Salt water.
They don't like to do that, really. The salt water.
Right. No, but he's, he's crossing the road. Good board, I take it? All right. Number nine, discussion, possible action regarding the memorial bench placement and requirements. Okay. I brought this up to Foster. I don't know, we've talked about it before, uh, about, what do you guys think? I think just to start with, the sidewalk going from right out here in the middle of the parking lot and going east just to, to the street where the.
Cars from the post office.
The post office is, yeah, thank you. And just widening that out for benches. We've already got these ones from Susie's Flare that we promised we'd put out there. And I'm thinking just widen it either one side or both. And where benches can be along there and still have the sidewalk clean, but they, people can sit there and eat. They can sit there, shay, they can do whatever, you know, and we just start.
Still gonna keep them on the inside, but we'll start over here.
Yeah, I mean, you know, just.
Yeah, like what we talked about.
Yeah, and.
Pour a little slab where they sit off the side.
Yeah, get them far enough, get them far enough off where they can sit there and people still use the sidewalk.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
Yeah.
Uh, you wanna do one side or you wanna do both while we're doing of that stretch? Well, I mean.
One side's the, what, the sidewalk? And we're gonna set them on that side of the sidewalk?
Well, or we can put them on both, that's what I'm getting at. That'd inhabit done for quite a while if there's more of these benches to be done.
Both sides of the sidewalk?
Yeah, we stood it out.
But, but if you put them on this side, that's a parking, right?
No, the, the sidewalk is running east and west going.
And the road is running east and west, parking?
No, there's no road there. We're, we're talking from the parking lot east.
Oh, okay.
Just the parking lot east.
Okay.
Just that stretch in there. If we're gonna do one side, might as well do both.
How many benches do we have at this point?
Well, I think just one or two.
Have two.
Two. But that's another thing, in this same deal, we need to clarify this, that they need to be the same kind of benches as we have.
Well, that's, that's kind of what we did last time.
Yeah, but I mean, we don't need somebody bringing the others that are not powder coated.
No, that are just like them.
They have to meet these specs.
Just like them, yeah.
Yes, yeah. But I mean, we need that in this motion, so there's no question down the road. If somebody wants to put it there, they can't, because I know we've already ran into that. If they, they paint them, the paint comes off, then they want us to.
Maintain it.
To maintain them and stuff. And I think these powder coated benches will last forever.
Yeah.
You know?
Yeah, we need to.
They need to come through here and.
Yeah, cause we can order them for them.
If they wanna put them up fine, but we're, we're specifying what.
Yeah, yes, that's what I'm getting at.
Yeah.
For, so they're all the same. They can have different things on, but all.
Right.
All built by the same outfit and powder coated. It's a governmental deal.
Word that in there that, like that.
Yeah.
Have to meet our specs?
Yeah, if they wanna put the benches up, we'll, we'll, uh, provide, they pay for it, but we're.
We're providing the place.
Yeah, place and, and the kind of bench that we're gonna put up.
Right.
But, uh, sidewalk, uh, pour, we'll pour a slab and, and mount the bench on the sidewalk.
I'll send it back. On favor?
Aye. But you guys wanna start over there?
I think that's the.
Cut last or?
I think, well, here's the deal. A lot of the stuff that goes on, there's food trucks and stuff in here, all the parking lots and all that. They close that street down and it'd just be, I think, handy.
Well, we've got benches, kind of, once a bit, that's causing a problem.
If they fill up, there's, there's lots of sidewalks that had to.
Yeah.
And you just water the mountains.
But we're not gonna have somebody say, well, I wanna buy a bench, but I want it over there.
No.
Well, we're gonna put it where we.
Where we pour the slabs.
Put them.
Yeah. Yeah, okay. And, and we might move next time, and you guys might give this some thought, we're still here, to put some on the west end.
Yeah.
Next time around.
At, at the commissioner's discretion, or that way it kind of.
But for right now, there's just gonna be these slabs that we pour. But for right now, there's just gonna be these slabs that we pour and be there.
For two benches, if, if more come, then we'll pour more slabs.
Right.
Or do all what we gotta do.
Right, but it won't cost much more to, to do both sides of the sidewalk while they're doing one.
That'll make it better a little bit.
Yeah, so. Okay. Number ten, review, discussion, possible action regarding Woods County fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five, estimate of needs, but.
Okay, but, um, that's too many. So they are ready to go to the audit, go to X F Board and then to the auditors. So it ended up being, um, ten million, ninety-six thousand, seventy-three dollars and seventy-six cents.
And in comparison to last year?
And last year we were eleven.
Looks fine, right?
So you guys need to sign the first spot, the second spot, and this one put it back here.
Agree on each one?
Yes, I'll take this one off so you don't have to. Commissioner, uh, no, okay. I think I've got one. An extra. So.
Do we sign that on the bill?
Yes. I gotta put that in paper.
Okay.
Three places on this deal, you say?
Yeah, where those tags are.
And just walk on this?
Right.
It's called a motion to approve?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, my motion to approve.
I'll second.
Right.
I have a meeting with the Board, X F Board Wednesday, and then, um, Thursday, either I or Rachel will be taking them down to the auditors.
The Thursday we have another meeting with that architect?
Wednesday.
You're gonna go out? Oh, it's like a change.
It's Thursday, yes, you're at Thursday. Yeah, I'll go after finding the, I think Rachel's gonna be there. Yeah.
Oh, we're two books.
Yeah.
Will I sign that on the bill?
This is on the way.
Just two and one?
Yes.
Okay.
Two, two books and then.
This, yeah, this is the first two.
Okay. Okay, number eleven, discussion and possible action regarding surplus and junking of server ID number H two four nine dash O four, backup SNAP ID number H two four nine dash O five, and backup server ID H two four nine dash O six for this session.
Tell me.
What's that?
On favor?
Aye.
All four of these pages.
Okay, number twelve, discussion and possible action regarding the O dot form three twenty-four A claim for project JP three, four, five, six, one, O four, for District One, project manager acquisition, parcel three, and acquisition secured, condemned parcel three in the amount of twenty-five hundred dollars assigned to Pinnacle Consulting Management Group.
That's another right away purchased out there on four ninety, that cover bridge, got one more deal after this, I'm a commissioner approve?
I'll second, on favor?
Aye.
One more land deal is ready?
The other's still negotiating, stays.
I want that to the per.
Yep, no.
Too small for me to read.
Okay, number thirteen, discussion and possible action regarding transfer of appropriation from Highway District One, C I R B to Highway District One Personal Services in the amount of three hundred and twenty dollars and twelve cents, and District Two's C I R B to District Two Personal Services in the amount of three hundred and twenty dollars and eleven cents.
Uh, motion to approve?
Second that, on favor?
Uh, aye.
It kinda fell off, didn't it?
That was.
That was like, that was like.
Scraps.
Yes, and this was.
Last week was sixteen thousand.
Yeah, this was like the end of the year.
Scraps.
And so I forgot to pick it up with the other sixteen thousand, I'll forget it again next month, so I thought, I'm just gonna do it by itself.
All these persons.
And get it due, 'cause I'll keep forgetting, I know I will.
No, didn't have any new business, I guess.
No, 'cause it's a special meeting, can't have new business.
Oh, this is a special meeting?
Yeah. It is, 'cause, um, I didn't have.
We've got a special.
I didn't have it on the. I didn't have it on the yearly.
Oh, okay.
They'll have another one here in a few days, won't they?
Yeah, yeah, which special meeting?
Thursday.
Thursday, yeah, we moved it to Thursday, 'cause he went to be free, so.
On Thursday?
Yeah.
Twenty-eight.
No.
Sorry.
Except for I can have two of each, otherwise I'm just gonna have one.
Oh, oh.
Yeah, 'cause John had to be gone too.
Oh, okay.
So, let me see.
Okay, fourteen, pre-discrepancy purchase order.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye. Number fifteen, motion to adjourn.
Tell me.
Second.